A call did November 27, 2018, work session meeting on the Portsmouth City Council to order a mountain of the front. Will you call the roll please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Simmons?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mayor Rowe?
Here. Dr. Patton?
Yes. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council. Health and wellness are key components in the sustainability of a community. Tonight, two of our guests will share with us presentations relating to health and wellness. This evening, we welcome Dr. Steve Julian, President of Centerra OBSC hospital and its subsidiaries, Centerra Bell Harbor and Centerra St. Luke Hospital. Dr. Julian is joined tonight by Mr. Andrews Stevenson, who is the Senior Community and Government Advocate for Centerra. The second presentation reflects the Portsmouth Diabetes Prevention Project. Eastern Virginia Medical School conducted a multi-year collaborative plan to prevent or reduce the risk of diabetes-related complications through community engagement in the city of Portsmouth. Dr. Margaret Baumgarten, Principal Investigator, and Mrs. Amy Paulson, Co-Principal Investigator, will share the results of this multi-year collaborative diabetes prevention project. We will have tonight the audit update by Mrs. Krista Edoff, a partner with Jerry Beckett, who will present the City of Portsmouth 2008 preliminary audit results. Dr. Julian.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Patton. My name is Steve Julian. I am the President of OBSC Hospital in Suffolk, and I've been with Centerra Healthcare for about 10 years. Prior to that, I was a cardiac and thoracic surgeon for about 26 years. So I made the transition from being a practitioner to an administrator. It's been an interesting trip. I'd like to show you a few things tonight quickly regarding Centerra Healthcare and its relationship to Portsmouth. Next slide, please. Do I push it? Do I hit like enter or something? There you go. Slow learner, but I'll get there. Centerra Healthcare by the numbers, it's been around for 130 years. We serve three states. There are actually four medical groups with over 1,000 physicians and advanced care practitioners, 5,000 members of medical staff. There's over 500 sites throughout the state and into North Carolina where we have sites of care. Of course, 12 hospitals, of which OBSC is one. We have eight magnet hospitals, and magnet designation is a nursing excellence designation that requires quite a bit of work to get that designation. And I'm happy to say that the most recently magnet-designated hospital with Centerra is OBSC. But we have a total of eight hospitals that are magnet hospitals out of the 12. We also have a health plan, Optima, which has over 500,000 members. Our relationship to the City of Portsmouth is on this slide. We have quite a few employees who live in the City of Portsmouth. Of that, of our employees who are employed here in Hampton Roads, 142 of them actually work in the city at our nursing centers or with our PACE program. The average hourly salary for a Centerra employee who's working in Portsmouth is around $20.16. Optima covers almost 20,000 lives in Portsmouth, including the city and the public schools. And so we're delighted to have the opportunity to be of service in that way. We actually see a number of patients from Portsmouth in our emergency rooms. The Bell Harbor Emergency Room, the one that pictured in the middle on the right, sees 9,500 people a year from Portsmouth. At OBSC Hospital, which is where I'm based, we see about 750 people from Portsmouth. And at Norfolk General, they see over 5,000 people a year who are residents of Portsmouth. So we do provide a significant amount of care for citizens. This is a sort of what we call a heat map, and this will show you where the concentration of residents are in the city. The right-hand side of the slide shows you that we have a total of about 18,000 Centerra Emergency Room visits from residents of Portsmouth when you combine all of our locations. Also, on the lower right-hand side of the slide, this shows the number of admissions that we have per year to Centerra OBSC Hospital that are residents of Portsmouth. It's about four, between 400 and 500 a year, and has been rising from 2004 through 2017. So the number of folks in Portsmouth that are choosing to come to OBSC is increasing. And we're delighted for about that. This is a 2017 depiction, again, the heat map on the left side. But the, I think the thing that I want to point out is that in 2017, there were 12,000, over 12,000 inpatient stays at a Centerra Hospital. And Centerra cared for nearly 30% of Portsmouth residents who were hospitalized during 2017. You can see that the larger percentage is 56% was with Bonds Secours, but again, 30% of folks who live in Portsmouth chose Centerra for inpatient hospitalization. I thought it might be interesting to you just to mention very quickly what's going on with Medicaid expansion. That is open now. People can apply now. We encourage people to do so. This is the information that we have. You may have better information. But it looks like there are approximately 4,300 Portsmouth residents who are probably newly eligible for coverage. The open enrollment goes to, is open now, and as of 1/1/2019, we hope to see many more people enrolled. This is how one achieves that. And it's very hard to see on this slide because it's sort of busy, but on the left-hand side, it shows you currently who's covered by Medicaid in Virginia. And on the very bottom portion indicates the new eligibility for folks. And throughout the state of Virginia, we think this is probably somewhere between 350,000 and 400,000 lives that will now be covered, which we think is a good thing. A little bit more about OBSC Hospital where I'm based. Centerra Healthcare merged with OBSC as an independent hospital in 2006. Our mission is to serve the communities that surround us and for those patients who choose to come to see us. I would like to point out that we are a non-for-profit. Some people think Centerra is a for-profit organization. It is not. It's a not-for-profit. And in the year of 2017, just OBSC itself provided over $20 million worth of charity care. We have a variety of services, from behavioral health to primary care. You can see the list there. I won't, I won't go over that with you, but it's a broad variety of services, about 175-bed Bell Harbor, which is located in what I like to call the Tri-Cities area, has just recently been enlarged. This was a picture taken back in spring of 2017 when we were doing an addition and enlargement to the facility. It has been there since 2008, and is a freestanding emergency room, but also has another aspect to it, and that's many advanced imaging services, physician offices, and other healthcare services, as you can see enumerated here. That was the groundbreaking. The older building that was built in 2008 is the one to the far right in the back, and the new building is the one that we just opened. We haven't totally completed the renovations in the old building. They will be done in February, but the new building is complete, and it's an 85,000-square-foot addition. In the new building, on the first floor, will be a gastroenterology suite. There's also a, what we call a clinical decision units for overnight stays for patients who don't necessarily need to be admitted to the hospital, but should not be discharged from the emergency room or not ready to go. And also, an expanded emergency department renovation will occur from 17 beds to 20, and we'll have a major and minor side. The other thing we did at Bell Harbor is we took the opportunity to put a helipad in place. As you know, Norfolk General has just undergone a renovation, and the helipad now at Norfolk General is on the roof. And there are two helipads. I don't know if you've noticed. One for the Coast Guard to be able to land there, and then one for Nightingale to be able to land. But sometimes too windy, and the Nightingale cannot land on top, on the top floor. And there's no longer a pad on the ground at Norfolk General. So Bell Harbor has become the secondary landing site, and that's about nine miles from Norfolk General. So we went ahead and coordinated those activities. Norfolk General, as you know, has undergone a, over $200 million renovation and has a full variety of services, primary Level 1 Trauma Center for the area, and a number of BESs that we are happy that we've been noted for in cardiology, diabetes, and nephrology. Last couple of things I'll say is that we are happy with some of the awards that we've gotten recently. Happy with them in the sense that they represent good care for the community. We are in the top 15 integrated healthcare systems in the country. In fact, we're the, with the IBM Watson recent designation, we're actually the only one on the East Coast to be nationally recognized. What does this mean to the average person? Well, it means that you're 13% less likely to die during your hospitalization at Norfolk General or in a Centerra Hospital. You're 22% less likely to have a complication. Our infection benchmarks are lower than national averages. Your hospital stay will be lower than national average. Your treat and release time in the emergency room is about 6.5% shorter than average. Our overall patient satisfaction scores are about six points higher than the national average. And our Medicare spend per beneficiary is actually about 5% lower than the national average. So we're more efficient in our care. The last thing I'll show you is our community benefit. I had mentioned earlier that OBSC Hospital had provided in 2017 $22 million worth of community benefit care. Centerra overall, for 2017, provided 364, almost $365 million worth of uncompensated care. I would like for you to know that every three years, we do a community needs assessment, and we work with our local communities for input on that and adjust our strategic plans and our provision of services based on the findings. You might be surprised to know that we're the fourth-largest employer in Virginia, or the largest healthcare system in Virginia. You might be surprised at the number of admissions, emergency visits, total deliveries that occur. Of that 15,591 deliveries that occur in Centerra Hospitals, OBSC is about 1,500 of those. Our medical group is, as I mentioned earlier, is fairly large, and we see almost 3 million patients a year in the medical group as an outpatient. So thank you all for the opportunity to present. That's sort of Centerra in 2018 in a nutshell. And if you ever need any hospitalization or care at OBSC Hospital or Bell Harbor, and you're not satisfied with your care, call me. I hope you will be very satisfied. Most of our patients are. But thank you again for the opportunity to present before the group.
Questions? Well, first, thank you very much for giving us this very comprehensive
Sure.
... presentation and what Centerra is doing for both Portsmouth and largest, larger community. In your opinion, what's the biggest healthcare challenge for the region in general and Portsmouth in particular?
Well, I think you're about to see a presentation on diabetes.
That's it.
I think that's one of the most devastating medical problems that we have, that people do not realize all the downstream effects of the long-term devastation that diabetes is to the body. I would say that the one hidden thing that is just becoming apparent, I think, to the country is what are called social determinants of care. Is that, is that a, is that a term that resonates at all?
You're talking about a divide in the delivery of healthcare.
Actually, I don't have it with me. We have a great slide that shows that about 20% of a human being's lifetime receiving medical care is either done in a hospital or in an outpatient setting like a doctor's office. And it's, but over 40% of things that determine a person's health actually occur in their social and economic environment. And I think over the course of the next 20 years, I think what we'll realize is, is that in America, we're extremely good. And I spent some time in England during my residency training. It's been a while ago now, but I don't think in England or many of the other countries of the world, they're as good at, they are as good at acute medical illness as we are in America, but they're a lot better at dealing with the social determinants of care. And that is improving socioeconomic situations so that people get good primary care and live not in poverty situations. Those lead to a lot of medical problems. I think we'll figure that out in this country over the next 20, 25 years. And I think you'll see work in that, that area that will change outcomes.
On your slide two, if we could maybe go to that, is there
Let's see. How do you go backwards?
You indicate that three states, Ohio, what is the affiliation?
Yes. Ohio, we actually have a, the healthcare division that is our insurance product, Optima. We are the convener for a healthcare plan in Ohio. That's how we serve there.
Of the 500 sites of care, and I'm going to use this term, are any of those an urgent care-type facility, or it's a standalone dock-in-the-box?
Yeah, sure. Actually, Centerra does not have urgent care as one of our divisions. We did in the past. We actually have partnered with a company from the northeast, Midwest, Velocity Urgent Care. And that is, they have acquired our urgent care facilities, and they are running them now. So actually, at this point in time, Centerra is not in the urgent care arena.
Other questions?
Okay. I guess with it, our Maryview here is a Bonds Secures Hospital, and these are Centerra Hospitals. And looking at the numbers on the next slide, a lot of the residents in Portsmouth choose to
Go to
Go to the Centerra market. So, I mean, I don't know if it's fair or if you can answer it, but the difference is between the Bonds Secure and the Centerra services that are making people choose.
Well, first thing, I would never be disparaging about another healthcare system. That's my first statement. Second, I honestly practiced up in Maryland. I'm from Lynchburg, Virginia, but I practiced up in Maryland, and so I never practiced personally in Hampton Roads and came here as an administrative person with Centerra. The second thing I'll say is that both are not-for-profits. The third thing I'll say is, you know, Bonds Secours is actually not Bonds Secours anymore. They're Mercy Bonds Secours. They were acquired by a large healthcare system from Cincinnati, Ohio, about nine months ago. So it's really Mercy Bonds Secours. Actually, Mercy Bonds Secours is a much larger system than Centerra. It's many hospitals and many venues of care. I will say this. You can go to Hospital Compare, which is a government website. Just Google in Hospital Compare, and you can compare every hospital in America. And I would just invite you to go to that site and Google Maryview and Google OBSC and Google Chesapeake, and it will show you the differences. Yes, ma'am?
What is, it seems that so many physicians now maybe practice at one or the other, or their, their practice is part, is affiliated with one system or the other.
Yes.
So it's not so much the patient having the choice in that, I go to Dr. Joe Schmo, Dr. Joe Schmo says,
Sure.
You're going here.
Sure.
You want me to treat you.
Yeah.
Is that sort of the name of the game now? Everybody has an affiliation?
Not everyone does. We have over 3,500 of the physicians in Centerra do not have an affiliation. But what happened was, and I'll just give you an example of my case, and then I'll answer your question quickly. I was always in private practice. I never practiced for, I was never employed by a health system. I was in the traditional private practice mode. What changed was Obamacare. And I don't know if a lot of people understand that. Obamacare was enacted in 2009 and became active in 2010. And though there are many good provisions of Obamacare, and I'm not advocating its rollback at all, one of the things that people didn't realize was the requirement for electronic medical records. And the other thing people, I think, did not think through very carefully is that there are many electronic medical records. A lot of entrepreneurs saw an opportunity to create EMR systems. These things are incredibly expensive. They're incredibly expensive to buy, install, and maintain. And the, the other thing that people don't think about is, and I'll just give you my example from my case, I know many people think doctors are too, too well-paid. When I started out in practice in, I finished residency in 1990 and started into practice, and I got out of practice in 2008, my reimbursement per case that I did dropped 78%. Not many businesses are successful over the course of 20 years when the reimbursement for what you're doing drops 78% over the course of that time. So what has happened is many physicians can't make it with the reimbursement that they receive from Medicare and Medicaid. You know, only about 60% of physicians in Virginia take Medicaid because Medicaid pays about 66 cents on the dollar. So many physicians become employed by hospital systems because of the expensive electronic medical records. You just can't keep up with it, and you can't bill without it. Obamacare requires you to bill in that manner.
The business model just completely changed.
The business model went away. The other thing is, is in hospital systems, physicians tend to be able to not maintain, but do better in terms of their, their income. And the last thing is, most of the young people who are finishing medical school or professional school as NPs or PAs at the present time were not people like me who wanted to be entrepreneurs and independent. I'm 63 years old.
Nothing wrong with that.
Well, good. I'm glad to hear that. But when I was getting out of residency programs, everybody, you know, people either wanted to go into academics, you know, and be at UVA or MCV, or you wanted to go into private practice. You didn't go to work for health systems. It wasn't an option. It's not something you wanted to do. But today, the young people, they do not want to go out and build their own business. They want to go work for somebody. They want to have as close as they can to a 9-to-5 job. Call. Let me just mention one last thing, and I'm sure you all are tired of me by now. But I, I assumed when I finished, I went to MCV, to medical school. I just assumed that part of the privilege of being a doctor was that you took call and that you took, that you took care of the community, and that was part of your obligation, and that was part of the privilege of getting to go to medical school and part of the privilege of, of being a physician. The younger generation doesn't feel that way. They don't want to be on call. The younger generation of physicians does not. And if they want to be on, if they have to be on call, they want to be paid. And I was never paid to be on call, ever, in my entire practice lifetime. In the last five to 10 years, physicians demand being paid for call, or they won't take call. Things like ear, nose, and throat, things like ophthalmology, subspecialties like plastic surgery, you can't get them to come on medical staffs and take call anymore because they can do just fine in their offices, just fine in their little surgery centers, and don't need to have the burden of call.
Phil Scott, question.
You mentioned that Centerra Bell Harbor has a helipad, and it, does that mean it's also a trauma facility? And the reason why I ask, I know a lot of situations you hear, even though a trauma situation happened in Portsmouth, they're taken
To Norfolk.
Centerra Norfolk General.
Yes.
Is that the only trauma unit in Hampton Roads, or at least on this side?
Well, it's the only Level 1 Trauma Center, which means it provides the full comprehensive gamut of services.
Naval Hospital.
Naval Hospital probably is.
Yeah.
The Riverside Hospital is a Level 2 Trauma Center. But no, Bell Harbor is not a trauma center at all. And the reason that we have the helipad there is because, is for coordination. Currently, we only fly about five or six patients a month from Bell Harbor to either Portsmouth Naval or to Norfolk General. But because we are an integrated healthcare system and we coordinate our activities, as I mentioned, with putting the helipads up on the roof and the wind issues that can develop, we needed to have some other place within close proximity. And now that there's two tubes for the Midtown Tunnel, it has made that trip, that trip a lot easier, and we knew that was coming. It's the next best place to land for, to pick up a trauma patient and move them. But Bell Harbor itself, I want to be very clear, is, is not a trauma facility.
Knowing that time is of the essence
Yes.
In those situations, is there any plans to, for that to become a trauma center?
Bell Harbor? Well, the way I would answer that question is no, but we had an application in just recently, less than two months ago, to add inpatient beds at Bell Harbor. And we were in a competing application with Bonds Secours. They, they proposed a very different concept from us, a surgery-only hospital, not associated with emergency room, does surgical patients only. We proposed a community hospital that was associated with the emergency room, would treat medical and surgical patients. In Bell Harbor, there's four operating rooms. But the state, or the Commonwealth of Virginia, decided that Bell Harbor, that Bonds Secours idea was a better idea than ours. And so they awarded a certificate of public need for Bonds Secours to build their surgical hospital of 18 beds in North Suffolk and denied our application. So that's where we stand.
Thanks. Follow-up on Elizabeth's question. Is Centerra still buying practices?
That's an interesting way you put that, Mayor. The truth of the matter is, and I've, I've been in Centerra 10 years as this transition occurred. Here's, here's an example. When I started out at OBSC in 2008, there were four doctors associated with OBSC that were Centerra Medical Group. Today, there are about 67. Not a single one of those did Centerra go out and buy. Not a single one of those did Centerra go out and buy. Every one of those, and I was there, I've been there, I can tell you, they came to us looking for employment. The truth of the matter is, most of the time, if Centerra is acquiring a practice, and I can't speak for Bon Secours or Riverside or any of the others, because I don't know what their, their strategic plans are, it is because we can't fill a community need. So I'll give you an example. At, at OBCE, Lakeview, many of you have heard of Lakeview Medical Center, they had cardiology services and general surgery services for many years. Back around 2011 or '12, they, they could no longer make it, related to what I'm talking about in terms of decreasing physician reimbursement, implementation of EMRs. The Lakeview general surgeons and the Lakeview cardiologists petitioned us to become part of Centerra. So we took them on, because we need cardiologists and we need general surgeons to serve the community, and these people were going to leave the community. So I don't know if that answers your question directly, but the truth of the matter is, we don't seek, we have not sought out practices to, to grow. We haven't had to. People have sought us out. I'm sure the doctors do the same thing with Bon Secours, Riverside, and so forth. But it is a matter of feeling the need as a not-for-profit to provide the care for the community. And sometimes the way to do that is to employ the physicians.
Can you go back to two? Slide two.
Let's see now, which way to, help me out. You're better at this than me.
She does it all the time.
Your map depicts service areas?
It does.
Are they equal in service delivery?
One of the things that is a mantra within Centerra is that, and I, I hate to use this example, but it's for this, for some reason, someone coming to my head right now, is we want to be a brand. And, and by that I mean, if you, if you go to McDonald's, terrible example, let me use the worst example I can use. If you go to McDonald's...
It's bad televised.
Yeah. I'm very afraid of that right now. If you go to McDonald's, you, if you go to McDonald's here or in South Dakota, you know what you're going to get when you order burger and fries. My point is, we want you to be able to go to a Centerra hospital, and you get the same quality of care wherever you go. Now, do we provide all services at every hospital? No. Actually, that makes no sense. And actually, we do not have the, the wherewithal to do that. No one does. There are just not enough doctors, nurses, there are not enough resources to provide all services at every hospital. But do we have a network where we can move patients? And the last thing I'll say along that line is this, at Bell Harbor, if you come to Bell Harbor as an emergency room patient, you're not necessarily going to be sent to a Centerra hospital if you need to be admitted. People think that. I don't know what Bon Secours' practices are, I don't know what Riverside's practices are, but at Bell Harbor, or at OBCE Hospital, if you come there and you need to be admitted, especially at Bell Harbor, the first decision is by the emergency room physician. The acuteness of your illness and the severity of your illness, they'll decide where you should go. The second decision point is where does the patient want to go. So if the patient wants to go to Maryview, or if the patient wants to go to Norfolk General, or the patient wants to go to Portsmouth Naval, or go to Riverside, we make arrangements to transfer the patient to there for hospitalization. So we're very egalitarian about it, and leave it up first to the doctor's choice, and then second to the patient and the family. One last thing I'll add is the electronic medical record that Bon Secours uses and the one we use is the same. It's called Epic. And back in 2010, we made it so that those are interoperable. So if you're a Bon Secours patient normally, and you normally go to Maryview or something, you end up down at OBCE for some reason, we can see your medical records from, from your Maryview admission and vice versa. So we cooperate, because that's the right thing to do for patients.
Well, Dr. Julian, thank you. To disclose to council, Dr. Patton and I met with these two gentlemen, and we felt it was really important that council and our community here about Centerra and what they provide to the region and to Portsmouth. So thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you for your time and attention. I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We will now have Dr. Margaret Baumgarten to come forward, who's the principal investigator for the Portsmouth Diabetes Prevention Project. Dr. Baumgarten.
My name is Margaret Baumgarten, and I'm practicing physician. I am a family physician. I work for Eastern Virginia Medical School, and I have a pleasure working in both hospitals. To the previous topic, Norfolk General and Maryview, I switch my weeks. I work with residents in both settings, and I still do take calls, and I wanted to go on the record, so. Not everybody is out of calls. So thank you for inviting us today and letting us talk about Portsmouth Diabetes Prevention Project. As I...
If I may interrupt, I think it's important to emphasize, we heard that doctors are employed by Centerra Bon Secours or in private practice, but you're employed by EVMS.
I am employed by academic institution. I spend my days training students and residents. Department of Family and Community Medicine has 41 residents, and I switch places, so I work with them at Maryview, I work with them at Norfolk General, there is Portsmouth Family Medicine Residency Program, and the Ghent Family Medicine Residency Program. And we actually switch residents from hospital to hospital that they're exposed to everything what our community has to offer. So Portsmouth Family Medicine Residents rotate at Norfolk General, and Norfolk General Residents rotate at Maryview. So I'm actually at Maryview this week. I have two residents from Portsmouth and one resident from Ghent. So we are on our inpatient team, and I started my day there at Maryview, we saw 15 patients, and I'm delighted to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you. I also fortunate to introduce my core investigator, and Amy Paulson. Amy is also part of EVMS, and she's actually with Department of Pediatrics. And we've been working in this project together for almost two years. We started this project on January 1st, 2017, with the generous support from Portsmouth General Hospital Foundation. I have to say hello to Ms. Jordan. Hello, Ms. Jordan. How are you?
Good.
I'm good, thank you. And we are focusing on diabetes, just because diabetes, as you heard from previous speaker, one of their major illnesses and contributors to overall mortality, and it contributes to cost of care, one of the most expensive medical problems in United States between cost care, health care cost and lost wedges. It, it costs us about $245 billion a year. If you have diabetes, your cost is about twice more expensive than cost of people without diabetes. And in Portsmouth, and you can see, this is national statistics, we have fair amount of diabetes. So what we do, we feel is very needed here, and we will talk to you about highlights of our projects, where we are, what we're doing, what our future goals are. When we talk about diabetes, there are several risk factors that we're talking about, and you already heard today, term that we're using very often, social determinants of health or social determinants of care. It's not necessarily medical care that we are providing, but those are health behaviors, what we eat, do we exercise, what our lifestyle is, do we smoke? All those contributes to health outcomes. If we're to look at a lot of different metrics, including important one like genetics, race, and zip code, anybody wants to guess what predicts health outcomes better? Which one out of the three I named, race, genetics, zip code, predicts your health outcomes better?
Zip code.
Zip code. Where you live, and now they say that your credit score. So based on your credit score and zip code, you can see what kind of health someone is and how long they're going to live. So we have to make some changes, right? Yes. So we're talking about important risk factors for diabetes, obesity, we're talking about physical inactivity, we're talking about food insecurity. But we'll look at Portsmouth, there are only seven counties in the state of Virginia, which has 133 counties, that have higher food insecurity than Portsmouth has.
What does that mean?
So that means people who don't have access to food, they either don't have enough food to eat, or they go hungry to bed, they don't have money to provide support for their families to buy dinners for the rest of the week. So there are a number of criterias, but thank you for asking, what food insecurity?
Not a food hazard.
So any answer...
That's a dollar.
Yes, it's a little bit right, different term, and if your answer is yes to one of those questions, then you're considered to be food insecure. And we'll go back to that slide to talk a little bit about overweight and obesity. So overall, in the United States, we are looking at about 66%, similar to Portsmouth. Virginia has a little bit better number, but when we looked at the Portsmouth Health Department Assessment, very recent one, we're actually at 57% obesity without overweight, so together, we're at 82%, which is much higher than national metric is. So this is our Portsmouth Diabetes Prevention Project, and as part of this project, we wanted to focus on those who do not have diabetes that we can prevent, but also come up with interventions that would be important to those who already have diabetes, because by implementing those interventions, we can prevent complications of diabetes. For example, number one cause for people to be on dialysis, to have end-stage renal disease and be on dialysis, is diabetes. So it's really a very important health problem. So we started this grant, which is all a research grant, so we do several different research projects, which are all R B-approved, internal review board, and that allows us to make sure that everything what we do meets all their highest requirements for research ethics, and participants' rights are protected, and everything what we do is important, and it also gives us right to share results. That's why we're able here to present it to you. And we had 14 different projects, and we have ongoing projects, and one of our focuses was on food pantries and on food insecure in Portsmouth. And as I mentioned, we funded by Portsmouth General Hospital, and we're going to start third year of funding on January 1st, 2019. One of the reasons we started this project, diabetes is such an important problem, and we have so many wonderful organizations with, all of them trying to tackle this. So we have YMCA working on one kind of project, we have American Diabetic Association doing something else in Portsmouth, we have Portsmouth Health Department. So our goal had been and continues to be, how we can combine all those three sources, how we all work together, that we know which one is doing, and we coordinating efforts, that we don't have three different stations screening for diabetes, where it's not what is needed, where we can invest that time and effort into different kind of intervention. So we were fortunate to work with Portsmouth Health Department and create Diabetes Work Group, for example, and we're not just a member of this work group, we work with everybody else within Health Support Portsmouth, but we felt that it would be very important to share resources, all information, and coordinate our current and future efforts. So to speak a little bit about Food Pantry Initiative. When we started this project, we started this collaboration with Food Bank of Southeastern Virginia and the Eastern Shore, and we actually looked at all food pantries in Portsmouth. So there are 23 food pantries in Portsmouth. And as our, our team, our research group, and we really, our research group, two of us, and Michelle Charters, who I did introduce, who is project manager, plus volunteers and residents and MPH students, but we went to every single food pantry, and we looked at what food they had, and how it was percentage of food encouraged. Only one out of 23 food pantry had nutritional policy, but we created inventory of what food there was, how it was distributed, how many clients they had, what hours of operation were. And definitely, we need to have food pantries, because we have food insecurity in Portsmouth. We also looked at what average client is, what needs there are, and conducted number of different health assessments that are also very important. And one of their positive findings was that we also surveyed staff and clients of the food pantry to see, would they be willing to make healthy interventions? Would they be willing to do things better if we were there to work with them? And the answer was yes, so that was a very exciting part. This slide is very busy, so I will just point a couple of things here. Their assessment of food clients, food pantry clients, is very similar to Portsmouth Health Department had on their health assessment, but I wanted to get your attention to those 27%. So not only we have high prevalence of diabetes and prediabetes, we focused on assessments for those who did not have diabetes yet, but were identified using standard CDC assessment as being at risk, which means they were overweight or obese plus had additional risk factors. But those 27%, about 1/3 of population, combined with additional 50%, puts us about 70 or 80% either at risk or with diagnosis of diabetes. 27% have not been diagnosed with diabetes, they do not, or prediabetes, they do not know about it yet. But unless we make some interventions, they will develop diabetes. So we are working, second sort of arm of our project, we're working with communication delivery methods. You probably heard about wonderful program, Diabetes Prevention Program, which is pretty intense exercise and diet and counseling program that exists in Portsmouth and down through YMCA. And number of people do not complete this program. You probably in your life experienced that there are some people who want to volunteer for everything, they want to do things, you go to different kind of meetings. I live in my neighborhood, and we have also civic-like meetings, so I always go to those, and there are always 15 of us, and we all know each other. And our community has a lot more than 15 households. So you have people who are engaged, but health is important to everyone. So what we're trying to figure out through this project, how we could reach to people who may not be engaged, who are busy doing other things, or who have not put their health as their priority, because they have other priorities to deal with. So we are working on how we can communicate with clients. And we did have some difficulties, because those are people who did not enroll or were enrolled and did not complete DPP program. So we are in a process of figuring out what preferred communications are. Is it text messages? Is it email? Is it webinar? Clearly, what we've had before didn't work, but what could we offer that will work? And we continue to work with food pantry, because we're going to use messaging system to promote healthy decisions. And an important one, community engagement. From our assessment of food clients, we learned that higher percentage of people with diabetes and prediabetes were from Karatic neighborhood. So we focused several different health interventions around Karatic. And I'm going to let Amy add to what we have done and take over for a specific project she's going to talk to you about.
Sure. I think what was interesting about the data that we got from, when we did the assessments at the food pantries, we were looking specifically at food insecure individuals, is that among people who were food insecure and getting food from one of the 23 pantries that we were, we were assessing, the ones that identified with the Karatic neighborhood, we had well over 70-plus percent of those clients that either had diabetes, had prediabetes, or scored so highly on their risk assessment test that it was likely that they either had it and were undiagnosed, or that they would develop it at some point. So this really created an opportunity for us to really partner with this community in a meaningful way, to, to look at health and to look at some of those other pieces of health. So not only the messaging piece and providing direct education, but also some of those social determinants of health that we talked about before, things like how safe your community is, how walkable your community is, what kinds of transportation, other resources your community has, directly relate back to how healthy people are. And so when we have a hotspot like this, it's really important that we think about what are... what other things can we leverage within a community to be able to address this need. So that's really why we approached Craddock. We've been working with them now for, I guess, about a year. And we've been working with the Craddock Civic League, the middle school, the PTA, as well as Paradise Creek and some others in the area, to better understand what people are experiencing in Craddock, how they experience health, how they experience the other aspects of their neighborhood that allow them to be active or not, that allow them to access food or not, that allow them to access healthy food or not. Those are all things that we're very interested in. So we're in the process of doing a health assessment in the neighborhood to really identify their specific health priorities and engagement. That includes both a direct measurement of some, what we call hemoglobin A1C, which is your three-month blood sugar test, and blood pressure as a baseline, as well as we're going to be doing what we call a door-to-door canvassing project. This is a little bit different than the assessment that the Health Department did, in that we are going to hopefully be going to every single household in Craddock to assess their risk for diabetes and its related conditions. And then hopefully, what we're going to be able to do is to have Craddock really serve as a pilot project that could be replicated in other parts of Portsmouth to improve health. Because what we know from the earlier data is that in terms of health conditions, diabetes really is kind of the perfect storm right now in Portsmouth. You know, we've got all these other pieces that are contributing to it. We've got extremely high-risk populations. We've got all these other social determinants of health that are factoring in, as well as really high rates of obesity and other comorbid conditions. And so when we look at those things coming together, we think about the long-term implications for the city of Portsmouth. It's not just about health now. Then it becomes about economics. It becomes about your workforce. It becomes about how do we handle now people who are younger and younger, such as children in school having type 2 diabetes. These are all things that we have to think about. How do we then re-engineer a city to be able to avoid these problems in the future? And so I think we have a really great opportunity right now to think about, do we take steps right now?
Yes.
To be able to avert this coming storm? Or do we wait until it hits? And that's kind of where we are right now. If we look at our obesity data, if we look at our diabetes rate data, plus the recent household survey by the Health Department, you know, 80% is astounding from a health perspective. My background is in public health pediatrics, and I've done a lot of work in Portsmouth now since about 2010. And this should be some of the most alarming data that, that we all look at. Because diabetes doesn't usually just exist by itself. So not only do we have that 80%, now we have all of those comorbid conditions that come with it that could potentially impact health, impact your economy, increase the number of people who are disabled, decrease the number of people who are able to work. It's going to impact your housing market. It's really going to impact every single aspect of what happens in a city like Portsmouth. That's why it's so important. And that's why we're really looking at Craddock to really think through, how can we create a model for how we, how we deal with this on the neighborhood level? Because health is place-based. Health is policy-based, and it's not just health policy. It's really all policy is health policy. We think about this in Portsmouth, it's not just, do we think about how people get to the doctor? We need to think about how do they get to work? How do they get meaningful employment? How do they have a living wage? What kinds of housing are they in? All of those things determine health, along with your access to health care. So one thing I wanted to talk about a little bit is what we call our PhotoVoice project. For those of you guys who aren't familiar with PhotoVoice, PhotoVoice is a way that we document things that are going on in the community, and we engage our citizens and partners to be able to take pictures, both of things that are going well and things that aren't going well in communities. So it's actually an evidence-based model for engaging communities in identifying not only what they see as a problem or something they want more of, but also to help start thinking through what could the possible solutions be. So we engaged a group of citizens and community partners in Craddock in three different series of trainings to go out and take pictures in that community. We're hoping to be able to replicate that project again across the city and other places. And what we really asked them is, what do you see in your community that helps or hinders a healthy lifestyle? And then we asked them to come up with both a photograph and a narrative that could be used as a way to describe what they see. And so we had both residents, as well as our summer scholars, and some of our staff and some of our other community partners through Healthy Portsmouth engaged in this. So what I'd like to do today is to share with you just a few photographs. And these are really representative of many photographs, because in some cases, people took the same type of photograph and wrote a very similar narrative. So the ones that you're seeing today are ones that we heard repeatedly across multiple people. So first of all, this is the Craddock Community Garden. This is something that we call, we say, something that's going right. This is a garden that was put in originally by the community. It was recently rehabbed through a grant through the Portsmouth Health Department and the state in collaboration with Healthy Portsmouth. This garden, right now, this is actually taken right when the winter plants were put in. Citizens were harvesting the collard greens and other winter plants for Thanksgiving recently. So this is a really great way to be able to increase access to fresh foods. One of the things that we want to think through as we're talking to you guys and have this audience today, is what's the role in city council and what's the role in city government for making more programs like this possible? And in particular, I would really encourage you all to think through, what are the models from other communities that are similar to Portsmouth in terms of making the ordinances around community gardening as community-friendly as possible? So I'd really encourage you guys to take a good look at your ordinance around community gardening and really think through, we have a really great, really great opportunity here. So how do we make it easier for more communities to not only have these types of gardens, but be able to, to manage them, be able to provide water to them, be able to have them on small spaces that might be walkable but not parkable in communities? So really be thinking through, what are the other really good examples in communities around, how do we, how do we best do this? And how do we make Portsmouth a place where community gardening is as easy as possible? Here's another photograph. And again, this was one of many. We liked this one actually because you could see somebody standing there, the level issue. Again, these are, these are communities where we want to get people out walking. Not just walking to walk, have a nice little stroll, but walking for transportation. And frankly, a lot of people in this community already do walk for transportation. What we have, though, is a situation where the sidewalk infrastructure is starting to crumble in our communities. And although we don't need a sidewalk in every single space of our communities, some are certainly walkable without them, it creates a real barrier for people getting places, especially people who have mobility issues. And if we look at our current burden with diabetes and obesity, we can forecast that we're going to have an increasingly aging population with increasing disability, and we want them to be as active as possible, because that's going to affect their quality of life and their length of life. So doing things like repairing uneven sidewalks that may encourage more physical activity, as well as provide opportunities for active transit to places to get food, education, jobs, resources, libraries, et cetera, this is a really important piece. The other piece is that when we know, when we focus on infrastructure, that we can improve how people utilize their community. So several years ago, we actually had another grant through EVMS in collaboration with Healthy Portsmouth that actually did a, an infrastructure project in the Port Norfolk community. We partnered with the city. The city leveraged some funding, as well as we brought in funding to rehab sidewalks, put in crosswalks, lay down biplanes, and we worked with that community for about 18 months on trying to remedy the, and find solutions that they themselves came up with. And some were super easy, like, hey, it's really dark here, I can't walk at night. Can we cut the branches back from this light post? And we called Dominion Power, they could come out and do it. Some things are easy and cost-effective, right? What we found as a, as a result of that project in Port Norfolk, when you've got a community that has two parks, a school nearby, a post office, has some central business district types of opportunities, two churches, a community center, is that at the end of that project, people were walking more in Port Norfolk. In particular, children were walking more in Port Norfolk. So what we know from that project, as well as there's a lot of scientific literature behind this type of community approach, is that this works in community. So trying to find ways for resources to be leveraged to address the walking, biking, transit infrastructure, the active transit infrastructure, not just the car travel infrastructure, but the active transit infrastructure is going to be critically important as we move forward in addressing this issue. If we can make it easier for people to walk in Portsmouth to get someplace than it is to drive, then they're going to walk. And that's really what we want. The other photograph, and we again had tons of these as well, is the Afton Square. When we talked earlier about social determinants of health, there is an opportunity that we see from a social determinants of health standpoint in Craddock. Certainly, we have the bones of what we call a charming community hub. It's mostly vacant right now. We have a real opportunity to leverage resources, we think. Not only for health, but also for economic development, which we know from a social determinant standpoint is critical to health. We also have two convenience stores that are in that community. They have active signs. You can buy cheeseburger fries and chicken nuggets there. It's the closest place for a lot of people to get food. And you know, the economic decline also that Business Square has led to some crime and safety issues, which is discouraging use of the park and physical activity in that community. So there is a great opportunity to really think through, how can we revitalize this in a way that makes sense not only for economics of the city, but also for the health of the citizens that live in this community? There are some really great models of finding the balance between economic development. You certainly don't want gentrification in that community, but finding that balance between bringing new resources in, creating some health hubs, making this a weekend destination for people to go, putting in shops that allow people to access fresh fruits and vegetables, really thinking about how do we locate maybe some health resources as well, considering the health of this particular community and/or other social services resources directly in that community. The library there is a vibrant place. It is actively used by the community. You've got a fire station there that's actively engaged in the community. There could be something that could be done in Afton Square that could be meaningful, I think, for the city, not only from an economic standpoint, but also in terms of crime and safety and in health. So we wanted to share these photographs. And again, these were examples of ones that were taken by multiple people through our PhotoVoice project, to really think through, how could we make change in this community in a way that might be meaningful for, for changing health and as well as decreasing poor health behaviors like access to unhealthy foods, consumption of tobacco products, et cetera?
We'll talk about future directions?
Sure. And we sort of outlined where we are and what we plan and where we plan to work. So to continue, our interventions will be around food pantry like there have been. We're working on creating pre-packed foods, pre-packed bags with recipes that, you know, it's great if you already know how to make squash or kale salad, but even if you provided those fresh produce and you don't know how to cook it, it doesn't help you any. So making it easy, creating recipes, working on prescriptive nutrition. So that's something that we've been very passionate about. It's something that will require a lot more collaboration, a lot more funding than we currently have. But I don't know if you ever heard about food pharmacies? Several different organizations have it. Organizations, some refer to Boston Medical Center that we visited. There is Food Hub in Charlottesville, and it's very successful. Basically, what it is, it's ability for those who are food insecure to get fresh food with healthy recipes and being able to provide for their family. And there are several different organizations in the community that are trying to work in Chesapeake, for example. And options include also making a health hub. It's difficult for people to go, you know, we, as you heard before, a 9 to 5 job may not work for those who need medical care. If you're working five, 9 to 5 yourself, it's very difficult to see a health provider who works exact same hours. So can we make it easy? Could it be Health Club Clinic, Health Hub Clinic, where clinic will be in the evening hours, where we would bring providers to citizens, to residents who are already there? What can we do to improve health? New policy to support community gardens. I mean, definitely, we need to look at several different investments. There are simple interventions, making walking safer, streetlights, security. Similar projects in Charlottesville where on certain days of the week, police provide patrolling of the streets, and everybody knew that they could go outside in those particular evenings. Great when you can do it seven days a week. But even if you knew that at certain times of the day, you are safe, you have good lightning, you have other people who are doing it with you, that makes it a lot more easier doable. And work with economic development, healthy food access. If there are opportunity, you know, we are working, as Amy was saying, in Craddock. It's hard to get fresh food. And we've been working with food pantries that bring food markets, but could we have something more sustainable? And when we're thinking about food store, could we think where people could, how people could walk to it, how they can access it by bus? What could be that everyone would benefit? We're really trying to tackle zip code, it's just not right. What could we do to change it? What can we do to make everyone has access to exact same food, to exact same benefits as everybody else? And therefore, health improvement, we are all members of the community. So what can we do together? So that is the question. But thank you for listening to our presentation. I think we went a little over our time, so sorry about that. And we're happy to answer any questions you have.
Members of council.
Yeah, we're talking about, you know, some of the food choices and stuff. It's an educational process for what people purchase at the grocery stores, especially for diabetics. Has there ever been an issue or an attempt to get somebody standardized food stores to maybe have a section in the store? So the people, you know, because when you start reading the carbs, or just like, I keep kidding in here about this little pack of drink mix, owners in big numbers, it says five calories, but in little, little words under it says per two-fifth of a packet. That's just ridiculous. But you know, if there was a section, you know, for these individuals to go in, and it's designated for that, maybe it would be better, easier for them to make better choices of what they're purchasing, instead of having to scan every aisle and read every single box.
I would agree with you more. That's something that we talked about as our, as one of their future possibilities for us to work on. Could we create a list where it would say that where to find it, that what is good for you, that you're not wandering around and puzzled reading labels? It's extremely misleading right here you. So that, this year, we're focusing more still around food pantries. I mean, we're a small-scale project, but ultimately, yes. We even talk about same recipe. Could we have a healthy recipe that when you go to the grocery store, not only you're trying to go to healthy food, but you also know where to buy, how to cook, and it's all cost-effective, where you're not spending $50, where you can feed family on eight or $10, how we can make it, so.
And in the food pantries, yeah, we're actually doing something similar to that in, in working with some of the food pantries to hopefully have a script, prescriptive nutrition program to where they're going to get a different box of food for people who have chronic disease. And this is something that we're working through to identify which pantries are at the point where they can actually implement a system like that. We actually had gone in and done actually complete inventories of all the food, if you can believe it, that was available, and looked at the, at the percentages of healthy food versus non-healthy food that are available. Not all of our pantries currently have the stock to be able to completely provide what they need to, to the population, but certainly trying to start out to where people are getting different food. Certainly, there is a piece of personal choice in there.
Big piece.
And personal preference in there, which is also a big piece of it. But in order to be able to make that behavior possible, we have to address some of the systems barriers in terms of actually getting them to the food and getting them to sample the food, try the behavior first. And so that's part of what we're trying to do with the Food Pantry Initiative, with hopes that we might be able to engage a, a big food partner to be able to do something like you've suggested in the store in the future.
And we're working with several food pantries providing education. So even though majority of their food pantries are associated with Food Bank, it's all run mostly by volunteers, so there is no required education. And if you're running food pantry with best intentions, what you and I think about what healthy choices are, could be completely different.
And that's what I was looking at as far as some of these major chain grocery stores. You know, you think it'd be beneficial to them to have somebody employed by them and make a section that's like a diabetic smart section for people to go directly to.
Recipe in food by.
And that would be so, so nice for them. It'd make it easier for them to stick to a regimental diet that they need to do.
Right. When we're advising in real life, what I tell my patients, don't go inside of the store, go on the outside of the store.
That's where the good foods are, not in the inner.
Don't go inside of the store if you want to be healthy. But it's difficult. Healthy is difficult and requires a lot of effort, a lot of paying attention. And as I said, we have, you know, health-related education, and even that, sometimes, not enough, because marketing plays a huge role, and it's very difficult to read labels. And combined, if you cannot see, did you see the print on those labels?
Sure.
Like you need to carry a magnifying glass with you, so.
Lisa.
Yes, I have two questions. Of course, the slide got my attention about the typical client is female, African-American, middle-aged, and makes less than $10,000 a year. But are those actual numbers, are they a pride thing? I mean, there are maybe some other people, some males, some, some other people who maybe didn't come to the pantry for this service, or?
There certainly, certainly are a lot of people that come to the food pantry. When we looked at, at the overall numbers, if we wanted to sort of paint a picture, that's the typical client. That said, there are lots of other people that go to the food pantry. They are predominantly female across all races as well versus male, although certainly we do have males that go to the food pantry. If you want, we can actually send you a breakdown. If you want, we can actually send you a breakdown of all that specific data, and we're just trying to condense it for this, instead of having a million data slides, but that's kind of what we call the typical, the typical food pantry patron. It doesn't mean that they're the only ones, though, that, that go to, go to the food pantry.
But, we have the date, including how many kids they had in a household, so we have.
The question that I had, I don't know, it's probably going to require some partnership with us, with schools, and maybe parental consent, but is there a way to do some screening, maybe at middle, middle school, or, or high school, maybe, you know, you go in and, and just find out where, where they're starting to develop these diabetic symptoms? You know, because, you know, there's probably a lot in the high schools, or maybe even in middle schools, that don't even know that they're having these issues because of their diet, or because of their health, you know, and not having health insurances, and, and just not even knowing. So, is there something, and I know it would require some funding, but?
Yeah, yeah, definitely, there's a resource issue there. We actually, the Partner Pediatrics partnered with multiple school systems several years ago now to, we actually brought in equipment to quickly measure children, and, and help the Portsmouth Public School System to do a complete assessment over several years of the body mass index of the, the students here. So, that was done years ago, but we are not currently doing that, because it's extremely resource-intensive. That said, any sort of intervention like that with the school, I think we would certainly be open to that. However, it would require the school systems' complete buy-in and investment, as well as making sure that we're following all of the appropriate rules and guidelines for the protection of the students' rights and privacy as well. So, I think that's something that we could think about in the future, as well as really thinking about what kind of education are we providing around critical health conditions like this through our schools, which may be enabling children to be, be able to bring things home. We are partnering with Craddock Middle School as part of that project. The principal there has been very open to working with us, and we're bringing cooking classes to that, to that school, and hopefully, those students and their parents. But, but there's certainly more that needs to be done.
An expert session, so we're going to have cooking through American Heart Association, we're going to have healthcare providers answering all the questions, and providing health education, and we're partnering with PTA, Craddock Middle School, PTA on that.
Knowing that the people, you know, if they grow in a garden, they tend to eat, but they grow. Do we have any restrictions on community gardens?
Yes.
I think it'd be good if you could, we could revisit that, maybe, certainly not tonight, but I think it would be good. Let's ask you to make that more friendly.
As we, right now, last night, dealing with zoning, this is a part of zoning that we definitely need to address, because from coming here in 2015 with Dr. Chang being our health director, one of the first things he called to my attention was the prohibited things that prevent people from being able to just establish community gardens, so we will be bringing that back to you all.
Very good.
Of the 23 active food pantries, how many are run by churches? Percentage-wise?
Michelle, do you have that?
Ninety percent, and most of them associated.
Associated with the Food Bank of Southeastern Virginia and Operation Blessing.
Would you come to the lectern?
Sure. Yeah, please, so, yes. This is Michelle Charters.
And there's a reason for me asking this question.
She's knee-deep in this day, so.
Yeah, but they talk.
The vast majority of the food pantries are run by churches. Churches do this on a volunteer basis.
Yes.
It's hard to get volunteers on the weekends, so most of the pantries probably run during the week.
They often have activities, though, on the weekend, they're picking up things, but yes.
My question.
I'm listening.
Okay. The time of day, in the day of the week dictates who goes to the pantry, does it not?
Yes.
To a degree, yeah.
Okay, so that may also add to the profile that you come up with.
Right.
Okay. Can you tell us who's the number one, if only one had a nutrition policy?
I don't have that, do you now?
I, I can tell you that the church with highest food to encourage amount, and I think it's the one with policy, is First Calvary Church, run by Louise Brisbane. She's there.
That's Calvary Baptist Church.
Is that your church? Oh, Mayor, is that your?
That's a bit tricky, like.
No. Hold on. I know someone who works there.
I think one of the, one of the concerns, I think, that we should all have, is that we've seen across the food pantries, and as well as you've asked the Food Bank of Southeastern Virginia, is that there is an, we call it aging out right now of food pantry volunteers, as well as we know of at least, I think, two here in Portsmouth that are at risk of closing, because volunteers are retiring and potentially moving out of the area. So, those are all things to think about, just in terms of, of the overall food insecurity issue, and why I think it really behooves us to think about a comprehensive prescriptive nutrition type of food hub here in Portsmouth, long-term, to try to address that need, and maybe have different hours of operation that could better meet the population's need. You know, we certainly do have a lot of, of working families that would really struggle to, to access some of the food pantries that are open during the week. That said, I know, for instance, one of the ones that operates in Portsmouth is on a Saturday, and good, solid hour before they even pull up, there's a line all the way down the street.
And it's a healthy food pantry, so it has most produce and fresh meat.
Well, this, this has been a very comprehensive and informative briefing on a very, very serious problem for Portsmouth.
Mayor and members of council, this ties directly into our poverty task force, and with the year's study that they have performed in the Craddock community, and the work that Mr. Moody and I about six months ago had with the group in regard to, in this task force, if we could identify a community that becomes the palate for, and definitely Craddock, and the one that was brought to our attention was the London Oaks community. So, we will be further working with this team, and infusing them in the work that we will, we will be doing, and the consultants come on Thursday, and we'll reach out to you all for a conference call on Thursday with the consultants that are going to be in.
Well, on behalf of City Council, for further questions, thank you, the EMA's team.
Thank you, thank you.
Dr. Bat?
Yes. Now, we will bring forward Mrs. Krista Edoff on the audit update. Mrs. Edoff?
I also think, Mayor, that this would be great if we could get the school board to have the same presentation at one of their meetings. We'll ask.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of City Council, City Manager, and all others in attendance tonight. I am pleased to be here tonight to report to you the preliminary results of the June 30, 2018 audited financial statements. We were engaged to conduct an audit. It's not only an audit of the CAFR, of the financial statements, it's also an audit on compliance with laws and regulations of the Commonwealth of Virginia, as well as compliance with the federal grants that you received, referred to as Uniform Grant Guidance. So, in conducting our audit, an audit is an extremely long and large process. We typically start the planning for an audit in the spring. We'll meet with management and members throughout the entire city and all of its components, and we'll conduct interviews, we'll start the planning for the audit. The audit is for the June 30, 2018 financial statements, so we do start the audit process two to three months in advance. We come in during the May through August timeframe, and we conduct a lot of our compliance testing, our testing of internal controls, gaining an understanding of the control environment, walking through the types of transactions and internal controls that you have. And then, once the books and records are closed out subsequent to year-end, we come back around the October timeframe and conduct the actual financial piece of the audit, building up to the close of the financial statements and presentation to you ultimately in December. So, I'm kind of here to present the results of the audit, where we stand today. But, just to kind of give you a background, the audit is not just of the city. So, the audit also includes other components related to the city, including the school board, the Economic Development Authority, and the Portsmouth Port and Industrial Commission. So, it's an expansive audit, inclusive of all of those entities, including the city So, in addition to just the audit, we are engaged to conduct certain other transactions. So, you participate in the Virginia retirement system. As part of that participation, we are required to test the payroll information and underlying census data that's provided to VRS as part of your participation in the retirement system, and we do issue in a separate report on that, which was issued October 1st. Additionally, we're required to test certain procedures at the sheriff's office for any specific bank accounts that they hold, separately from what the treasurer may hold. And then, we also conduct compliance with any landfill that you hold as part of the Department of Environmental Qualities procedures. So, again, it's not just an audit of the financials, it's a fully inclusive audit of the entity and compliance with many of those things. So, in conducting our audit, we are required to gain that understanding of your internal control environment. We do not issue a separate opinion specifically on internal controls, but if any matters were to come to our attention, we are required to report those to you. Additionally, during our testing of non-compliance, if any matters come up where the city or any of its components are not in compliance with certain laws, regulations, or grant agreements, we are required to report those to you as well. So, when I'm reporting the ultimate, you know, results of where we are today with the audit, I will be talking with you about those matters as well. So, we do expect to issue an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. That's ultimately a clean opinion, and it says that the numbers that are presented, the transactions that occurred for the year are not materially misstated. And so, that's ultimately what an audit says. So, in the end, there is some risk of audit failure, because audits are conducted on a sampling basis. We do not come in here and test 100% of transactions, and we do disclose that when we are engaged to conduct that audit. So, there's some risk that, you know, an audit's not going to detect every single error that's going to result as part of the audit. So, in conducting our audit this year, despite having a clean opinion, part of that clean opinion is the result that management caught an error that had occurred in prior years. As part of preventing and detecting that error, they did make an adjustment, or they're currently analyzing and proposing to make an adjustment, for about $34 million on the governmental activity side related to construction and process. And then, on the business-type activity side, about, from what I understand, about $8 million of assets that are sitting in construction and process, ultimately on the balance sheet or your statement of net position, that really should have been expensed in a prior year. And so, there was an adjustment made for that. Again, management, new director of finance, and those involved in the finance process this year ultimately caught that particular error, and they're putting in procedures to correct and make sure something like that doesn't happen going forward. And ultimately, that's what a good management and internal control system does. It catches things, it puts processes in place to make sure errors don't occur. So, in addition to having a clean opinion, we are including another emphasis of matter in our audit opinion, that basically tells you there's a significant change in an audit standard this year compared to what was in effect last year. And that new standard is to recognize any liabilities on the face of the financial statements that are associated with any of your post-employment benefits. And mainly, those post-employment benefits relate to retirees' healthcare. And so, recognizing that you do provide benefits to those retirees for their future healthcare, there is a certain cost to you, and ultimately, a large future liability to the organization, and so that balance has been reflected in the financial statements this year. It is a significant undertaking in order for something like that to occur, so that's part of these two reasons, that one, draw an emphasis of matter in our audit opinion, but two, have also created some slight delays in the audit process this year. So, in addition to the audit on the financial statements, which again, is a clean opinion, we do have an unmodified opinion on your compliance with laws and regulations as they relate to government auditing standards, and then your compliance with the state regulations put out by the Auditor of Public Accounts of the Commonwealth of Virginia. And so, again, we have a clean opinion, but I did mention to you, if any matters of non-compliance come to our attention while we're conducting that testing, we are required to report those to you. So, during our testing throughout the interim and final processes, we did identify four instances of non-compliance during that testing, that will be ultimately reported in the schedule of findings and question costs, once the final audit reports are issued. The last report that we issue is on the compliance with federal grants, so it's also referred to as a single audit, and that report this year is actually a qualified opinion, and it's qualified for our testing of the TANF and the Medicaid programs. And essentially, what that means is that for the other programs that we tested, the city was in compliance and had enough evidence and support to substantiate compliance with those grant processes and procedures. Unfortunately, with the TANF and the Medicaid program this year, they could not fully substantiate and corroborate a lot of the information that we were asked to address and test compliance. And our understanding is that during this past year, the Department of Social Services has moved to an electronic records process. And so, in that conversion, many of the records either incorrectly scanned in, were not clearly scanned in, once they were scanned in, they were potentially misplaced, or there may have been some records that weren't scanned in at all. And so, as part of our testing, some of the information we needed to substantiate and corroborate really just could not be substantiated because of this move to the electronic records process. Our findings are very consistent to the state audit that has also occurred over the past year. The findings that were provided by the state are really consistent with what we also found during our audit. So, as a result of the non-compliance and the adjustments, we do have a material weakness in internal controls reported in the financial statements this year, recognizing that the control environment wasn't there in the past to catch the errors, and ultimately, you know, management now has caused them themselves, and they've corrected it for going forward, so hopefully, you won't have this type of internal control issue going forward. But, we do have to recognize that as of June 30th, those processes weren't in place to catch the errors in a prior year. Also, for the TANF and Medicaid program, I think it's pretty explained that the process occurred in the conversion to this electronic records process, and hopefully, will not be a recurring matter going forward. So, as part of our audit, there are other things I am required to report to you. The city did implement GASB-75, which was to record those post-employment, other post-employment benefits on the face of the financial statements, so that was a significant change. In order for the city to record that transaction, they also have to restate last year's financial statements to record and reflect the beginning balance of that liability. So, you will see a substantial number of disclosures related to those other post-employment benefits, and you will see that restatement. So, if you tried to take the financial statements this year and compare them to last year, they're not really reflective of each other, and so that's why it's important that I call it to your attention, because it is an accounting standard that's requiring that change, but it is a substantial change. So, as part of our audit, we acknowledge that not every number that's in the financial statements is a hard and fast number. There are some numbers that are considered to be estimates, and so anytime there's estimates involved, there are some underlying assumptions associated with those, and any changes to those assumptions could essentially change those numbers. And so, we do like to draw to your attention that the significant estimates that are in the financial statements that could subjectively change are the allowance for doubtful accounts that you provide on your taxes, any of those actuarially computed liabilities. So, when you're, have your pension liability, or when you have your retirees' healthcare liabilities, that's not a number that the city just comes up with. They actually provide a lot of information out to the actuaries, and the actuaries use a lot of statistic and historical data, mortality tables and rates, assumptions of what the investments and market's going to do, to ultimately come up with what your liability's going to be in the future, and then they take that liability and they discount it back to present value. And so, there's a pretty substantial amount of estimation and assumptions that go on in that process, and so recognizing that number truly is an estimate based on known and le- And so there's a pretty substantial amount of estimation and assumptions that go on in that process. And so recognizing that number truly is an estimate based on known and likely circumstances. But again, if the market crashes tomorrow, we all know what happens to investments when that happens. So again, that could substantially change what ultimately the liability is in the future. And then, second, the last one is depreciation expense. And so what happens in a, on the government-wide financial statements and on your enterprise funds, when you purchase assets that are capital in nature, you reflect those as assets on your balance sheets. And ultimately, you're going to depreciate those over the estimated useful life. So when you buy a vehicle, you anticipate you're going to have it for five years, and you depreciate it over that five year. That vehicle could truly last you seven years, it could last you four years. I mean, it's really, again, just an estimate. So we acknowledge depreciation expenses and estimate vehicles, it's a little easier to predict, but something like a building, where you're talking depreciation over 50 years, that's where you get a lot more of the estimation that comes into play. So there were no material audit adjustments caught by us during the audit. Again, we draw your attention that management found a significant audit adjustment related to errors in prior year that they have corrected. And then we also identified, I guess, one issue where, in the prior year, one invoice was double-recorded on accident, and so that was ultimately corrected and reflected in the current year's financial statements. So it's just a timing difference at year-end where something was double-counted, and in order to correct it, it was corrected through the current year. So we did not have any disagreements with management throughout the course of our audit. We did not have any difficulties in conducting our audit. So we are required to tell you if those were to come about, and as a board, we would think and hope that you would like to hear if ultimately we had disagreements with management throughout the course of our audit. But I am pleased to tell you we did not, and we have not had any difficulties in conducting the audit. So subsequent to this board meeting, when we issue the final audit opinions, we will ask management to ultimately represent to us that they gave us everything that we needed to conduct our audit, that the numbers reflected are true and accurate, and that they're ultimately in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. And again, management will sign that and say that, again, the numbers are true and accurate, they've provided us everything that they needed to in order for us to do this audit, that they've answered our questions correctly and truthfully. In order to be auditors, we are required to be independent of the organizations that we audit. And so that is extremely key, that we don't have any family relationships or other bias with members throughout the city, ultimately where we might give you an opinion or kind of let you do something that ultimately you shouldn't have done. And so Cherry Becker is independent with regards to the city and all of its components. And independence is truly likened to your conflicts of interest. So we're not allowed to have any conflicts of interest with members and employees throughout the city and the organization. So I do have my members of the team with me, my senior manager Laura Harden and our in-charge, Josh Hemrick.
Can they come forward to what you-
Sure, if y'all would come up here. In conclusion, I'll take any questions, but we would also truly like to thank members of the Department of Finance and all others that did help and assist us throughout the course of this audit. Again, as I explained, we start this process roughly in the April timeframe, and we don't conclude till December. So we're talking six, seven, eight months, just of constant communication and bugging them to make sure we conduct our audit. So it's a truly extremely large task that they have to endure to, one, put the financials together, and then provide us with everything that we need to conduct our audit. So thank you. And with that, I'll take any questions.
We thank you for your thoroughness and your professionalism and your detailed briefing tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Patton?
Yes, Mayor, tonight in your city manager's report, you have four items. The first is acceptance of funds from the Virginia Department of Transportation for the Portsmouth Emergency Vehicle Pre-Exemption Project, and its adoption of an ordinance to establish a new project entitled Portsmouth Emergency Vehicle Preemption Project and the FY '29 Capital Improvement Fund project, and to fund the EVP project in the amount of $301,809 for the following two reasons. One, by accepting congestion mitigation and air quality funds in the amount of $204,000 from the Virginia Department of Transportation, and appropriating said funds to the EVP project. And number two, by transferring additional CM AQ funds in the amount of $97,809 from the Traffic Signal Upgrade Project to the FY 2019 Capital Improvement Fund budget for the EVP project. The next, I will give the title, and Mr. Ashby will speak to it, amending Section 35-14 of the City Code regarding refunds to tax overpayments.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, as you may recall, I believe, just before the hurricane season, council asked that we modify current city ordinance so if there's a need for a tax refund, the process would not, as it had been in the past, if it was over $1,000, it required the City Council action. The ordinance before you is the modification requested, and that's what's open for your vote this evening.
The third is adoption of a resolution directing that an analysis of a proposal received for the construction of a new city hall and a new public safety building be conducted by city staff. The fourth and last for tonight, adoption of a motion to permit Alicia Mayer to adopt a Portsmouth Police Department Mounted Patrol horse Shades, a 15.2 handy gray perch-cheron thoroughbred Galan. And this has been a very emotional time for our Mounted Patrol, but Shades cannot go anymore. And so we have found a home, but council will have to approve this for Shades to find her new home.
So we're retiring the horse tonight, and I'll need a motion to do that?
Yes.
Okay. On the public hearing, this will be before first reading. And tonight, we have the interim president of Tidewater Community College and our provost of the Portsmouth campus, Michelle Woodhouse, coming tonight. Will present them with a resolution and let them speak like we normally do when we have such presentations. And I'll ask them to go to the lectern so they can first be amplified and then address council. All right? Dr. Patton?
I have one more report back, Mayor. Last night, the council asked city manager to prepare a letter for city council to endorse, asking the Virginia General Assembly delegation to change the state code, put legislation in place to provide support to a board, allow for alternate means of advertising. After researching and meeting with staff, the issue of the requirement for legal publication in local newspapers, the city's intergovernmental affairs manager, Mrs. Sherri Neal, suggested that we, that she will monitor and review any legislative item submitted on this subject matter for future consideration and support, and that that would be the best recommendation for us to address this issue, as it would have to already have been or being submitted as a legislated item.
And that's your recommendation?
That is our recommendation, and I've consulted with city attorney on this matter also.
Let's go to council aides, I'll report, and I'll start with you, Ray.
Yes, I do. PRHA, they welcomed their new commissioner, Kyle Kovacek, financial analyst with Wells Fargo. The authority was designated as a HUD High Performer for the Housing Choice Voucher Program, so they received 95% of the Section 8 management assessment for that. The authority also received the 2018 Agency Award of Excellence by the National Association of Redevelopment Housing Officials, NARO, for the Financial Freedom Seminar, and the award was given only to a few housing authorities, I think it was less than five or seven that got that. The authority also had some concern about their capital improvement funding that was allocated, but Dr. Patton and Mr. Edward Bland did speak, and they do have that $350,000 that's appropriated for that use. So they will begin demolition of the Lincoln Park by the end of this year, and the city has also found additional funding for them to aid with that project.
Thank you. Elizabeth?
Yes, only meeting, parking authority, we met on November the 15th, and the only order of business we did was the body voted in a new set of bylaws because it had been some number of years before they had been reviewed. So that was the only update.
Any other items? I do have one with council's concurrence. I think we should ask the city manager, I've been getting calls about the video games at vape shops, and it's my understanding is that they generate a lot of traffic, a lot of customers, but also a lot of revenue. And I think we should ask the city manager and the city attorney to give us a report on the overall status of such shops, any regulations that we need to consider about public safety. And lastly, whether or not we should require a business license to share in this huge amount of revenue that is being generated by people going to vape shops. Anybody got any problems with that? Okay. Thank you.
We have it.
All right, with that, we're adjourned. For Eve-